Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us today. Today is October the 27th, 2015. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. That said, we have today Chaplain Gary Sheldon of the Patriot Guard Riders that will lead us in the invocation, and then Mayor Pro Tamm Kukneo will lead us in the pledge. Thank you for being here.
Now let us bow our hearts before our Lord's throne of grace. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege of speaking to you in prayer and the gift of two ears to hear your response. I ask your Spirit to take His rightful place in the hearts of council members who call Jesus their Redeemer. Grant them the gift of wisdom in their decision-making this day. It can be an awesome duty, yet rewarding to the people looking to your wisdom, Lord. May you be glorified in today's efforts. Also, Lord, I would ask you, please, to put a hedge of protection around our sheriff, his deputies, our police chief, and his officers, our fire department, and all the people on the fire department, our medical staff in the hospitals and the ambulance crews, our search and rescue people, and all the people across this land who devote their lives to serving others in these jobs. And I also ask you, Lord, to put a hedge of protection around our servicemen and women and their Christian chaplains who endeavor to bring the Word of God to those people. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Mayor Kirkendall?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tamm Kukneo?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
All present.
Greg, can you hear us?
Yeah.
We have one proclamation. Chris, you'll be doing the proclamation for Colonial Heritage Month. And someone is here to receive the proclamation.
Yeah, and I'm guessing I know who it is, Mayor. Unless I'm, like, really behind on the times.
Was a dead giveaway, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah.
What was it, Ken?
That's a good guess.
Yeah, that's right. And you got a ribbon. You guys are all dolled up. This is a proclamation for Colonial Heritage Month, whereas the Jane George Chapter of the National Society Colonial Dame 17th Century of Prescott, Arizona, is locally sponsoring National Colonial Heritage Month during the month of October 2015. And whereas National Colonial Heritage Month brings to mind the first courageous settlers who arrived in America and who determined the direction of the formation of our country, and whereas the members of this society, by virtue of their lineal descent from those early arrivals, feel an obligation to work for the preservation of the priceless legacy that these early arrivals left to all American citizens, and whereas they continue to convey the true meaning of the inheritance by reminding us that our privilege to live in a free country has stemmed from loving our country, obeying its laws, respecting its flag, and defending it against all enemies. Therefore, Marlon Kirkendall, by virtue of the authority vested in him as mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim the month of October 15th as Colonial Heritage Month. Would any of you like to maybe introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you do?
I am simply here dressed in the colonial wear. I don't recommend anyone bother to do this.
I'm Sharon Johnson, president of the local chapter, and this is our chaplain, Sue Erwin. And we would like to thank the mayor for this proclamation. We appreciate it. We'll continue to strive to do the work of the society. And I wanted to mention one more thing. We have added another endeavor to our work this year, actually for the next two years at least, and this is on the request of our modest state, Arizona State President of the Colonial Dames of the 17th Century, Lee Nelson. She has requested that we put our effort into the Horses and Heroes Program, which is part of the Horses with Heart. We do a lot of support of our veterans, and Horses with Heroes is a program that's trying to implement the idea that by working with animals, it makes it more easy, more calming, and more beneficial to the returning injured veteran. So we are lucky to have a program like that right here in Chino Valley. If you haven't checked it out, please do so. It's well worth supporting.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to presentations. We want to announce that one.
Presentation of the Operation Deep Freeze 2014-2015 report.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Paul Mitchell, and I am the executive director of the Coalition for Compassion and Justice and also the facilitator of the Quad City Interfaith Council. And we're here together, this is Bob Blankenship, a peer support counselor from the VA, and Lieutenant Elaine Mansour from the Salvation Army. We're here today to talk to you briefly about our work last year with the emergency winter shelter called Operation Deep Freeze. Couple of things to highlight at the beginning. We are all working together, these three organizations and more organizations. There's probably 15 or 20 organizations that are working together, and I like to highlight that, that Operation Deep Freeze is a collective effort to benefit the community. Secondly, we're not here to ask the city council for any money. We're going to give you a report that says that we raised our own, and so we can talk about that a little bit. I want to take a moment and say thank you to a few people for last year's effort. As we sort of came to the need for a new location to house the Operation Deep Freeze, we needed the support of Tom Geis, the development director, community development director, Fire Marshal Devendorf, and Randy Plummer, the chief building inspector, to make sure that we were going to find a place that was, could accommodate the people that we needed safely. And they were on the spot. They helped us, and I want to acknowledge them early on here. Sometimes our staff, the staff doesn't always get acknowledged. And we have a couple other acknowledgements later, but what we did last year was recognize that we needed to start the program anew, and we needed to raise funds. And I want to highlight for you that last year, again, with a huge effort, we raised in this community $47,000 in support of Operation Deep Freeze. We have been so blessed by that that we are not soliciting contributions this year. We have a surplus, and we're able to carry it over this year. So we have that to continue moving forward. Bob, do you want to talk about the program?
Sure. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Blankenship, and I'm a VA employee. I basically ran the shelter for the Salvation Army and CCJ. We were able to hire three full-time employees, along with a pool of about 15 volunteers. We also had the collaboration of a multitude of the worship houses here in town who came in on a weekly basis and provided meals for our unfortunate homeless population. What I would like to share with you is just some of the unscientific but objective statistics that we have of the people that we served last year. We were able to serve 81 guests in the 22 nights that we were open. Some of those were resitivistic, some of them were new, some of them declared themselves as Prescott citizens, some were just passing through town. Demographically, 80% of the 81 people were over the age of 50. 5% were over the age of 70. 90% of those people suffered from some form of mental illness and were not receiving services. 45% had issues with substance abuse. 20% were veterans. 35% had some sort of income, but due to the limited amount of fixed income they had, most of them on SSI, which is under $800 per month, they couldn't sustain housing. 75% of those that we served received services from DES, Access, medical insurance, but only 20% of those people got regular medical or mental health services. 55% of those people that we served were future-oriented and hopeful. Due to, well, actually, with some very hard work and multiple phone calls, I was actually able to house five people, three of those which are still in the housing that we put them in last year. The other two kind of fell off the radar, and for what reason, who knows? We'll probably see them again this year. But anyway, I just want to thank the community in general at large, as does the VA, for all the assistance that we've been able to provide the homeless population. And this is Commander Mansour from the Salvation Army. I think she has some comments.
Yes, we stepped in last year to house this program, and I wish you could see the faces of the men who came into a hot meal and mattresses and blankets on the floor. I thank this community for putting it together, helping us put it together. We had great teams working with it, and we will be hosting it again at the Salvation Army. If you know anyone who's interested in volunteering, please have them give us a call. We'd love to have them support us. Rumor has it that we may not be as fortunate with a warm winter this year, and so we are prepared to be open the extra hours as needed.
And we did increase our staff to five paid employees this year.
Yeah. I want to make sure that I recognize a couple of council members who helped us last year, and we have a simple certificate for them. When we first started our efforts to try to find a place, Charlie Arnold and Chris Kukneo came through at a couple of meetings, and we want to acknowledge that early and enduring commitment to help us out. So I have a little certificate here for each of them.
Good.
Thank you. So I don't think this is a question time, but we thank you. We'll be out there again. The volunteers are already scheduled for this coming week, and we are looking at 32 degrees in the next few days, so we'll be looking to be open when it gets down below that. So we're available if you need anything from us.
On behalf of the entire city, we want to thank you for what you did last year. You know, every year it's been a challenge, and the way you stepped up last year and brought it together took a lot of the pressure off of us, the citizens of Prescott, and what a great job. And again, Chris and Charlie, you're welcome to say something if you'd like, but it's appreciated, and where we can help, please call on us.
Yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, and I would like to just say something. A couple seasons ago, Daniel took me over to Operation Deep Freeze when it was in operation once, and you know, it's not what you think it would be. It's very quiet. These guys roll out their little bed mats, they toss on a Disney movie, they maybe get a shower, a phone call, and they go to sleep, and they wake up the next day. And the circumstances that require Operation Deep Freeze to go into effect is it has to be predicted to be below 25 degrees or two inches of snow, and I don't know if that's still the same, but...
It's still right.
Those are pretty harsh conditions, and you can't forget that, I think it was about a couple or a few years ago, a gentleman froze to death behind the old Circle K up there on Monizuma. And as far as I know, it hasn't happened since. So thank you very much for Salvation Army for stepping up. You know, at those meetings, when we were there, there was a lot of groups, and everyone wanted to help, and no one wanted to open the doors, and Salvation Army did. So thank you very much.
Absolutely true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda, and we'd like to pull item E just for a comment after the approval of the other items. So go ahead.
Consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on October 13th, 2015. Item B, approval of annual purchase of asphaltic rubber crack sealant from Craftco Incorporated using State of Arizona contract number ADSP 013-035060 in an amount not to exceed $100,000, city contract number 2016-089, the Streets Fund. Item C, award of one-year city contract number 2016-087 to Hill Brothers Chemical Company for the purchase of Accutab chlorine tablets in an amount not to exceed $75,000 with an option to extend the contract for one additional year. Item D, approval of submission of an economic strength project grant for the extension of Corsair Avenue in Prescott Air Park in the amount of $500,000 from the Arizona Commerce Authority with funds provided by ADOT. And item E, approval of United States Bicycle Route 79 through the city of Prescott.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, Mayor?
Mayor?
I'd like to remove item E from the consent agenda, please.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
Item E.
Okay, so we're off. Let's go ahead and have a motion and second for A through D, and then we'll come back to E.
Mayor? Move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1D.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move back to item E. You want to, Jean, you have a comment, and then we can go to Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to acknowledge the people who worked on the bicycle working group, who took in hand the recommendation to establish a bicycle route 79 through the city of Prescott when it was given to the council for approval last January, maybe February, by ADOT. There was some discussion on the council about an alternative route, and at that point, the mayor authorized a working group to get together and take a look at what would be the best route. And this group met over the next six months or so, and I wanted to thank Russ Willis in particular for agreeing to chair the committee, and Sandra Smith and Margot Christensen, who are here with us today, were also on the committee, and especially Bill Fornelli and Officer Mike Frascone and Lisa Sanders, Zander, excuse me, from Prescott College, who actually rode the route through town, and they tried several to see which one would be the safest way to go, and decided that there's a better alternate than what ADOT had suggested, and that's what's being presented to the council for approval. This has a minimal cost, and it's basically way signage that will direct the adventure cycling groups who come through Prescott on this particular route. And there was one more person I forgot to mention on the committee, Fred Oswald, and then, of course, we had Ian Mattingly and Henry Ash from the Public Works Department sit down and work with us and give us advice, and were very helpful in allowing us to use their conference room, and I think it was a really good group that worked together. And I wondered if we might give Russ just a minute to say something about the bicycle route.
Why don't we give, fine, but let's see if Greg has a comment before we bring somebody up from the audience. Greg, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. And, gee, I appreciate everything that everybody did, but I still, every bicyclist I speak to in town, they tell us how unsafe our roads are, and I don't know how we can endorse, you know, not only people from Prescott to ride our streets, but invite everybody from around the country to come and ride on our street, when everybody's telling me they're not safe to share the road with bicyclists and motorized vehicles.
So those are your comments?
Those are my comments.
Okay. What are we going to the public now before we ask for the vote? So who is it, Jean, that you have?
Russ Willis.
Okay.
Hey, Mayor, can I just, a comment to Greg, if you can hear me on the phone there. If you put your telephone on mute, we're getting a lot of feedback here, and just take it off when you want to speak. That'd make it a lot better in this room.
Hold on. How's that?
Beautiful.
Okay.
If we can hear ourselves coming back, then we'll know it's still a problem. Good afternoon, council, Mayor. My name is Russ Willis, and I do have some comments about the process, but I would like to, as far as details of the route, I'd like to defer to Lisa Zander, who did head up the task force that mapped this alternative route.
I'll just keep this really brief, but the original route, we're pretty much sticking close to the original route, except for we are detouring cyclists off of Willow Creek Road, because all of us who rode the route and members of the working group thought it was exceptionally unsafe. Greg's right, there are some unsafe spots, but we decided to, if possible, reroute it on Pioneer Parkway and Williamson Valley Road, which are quite enjoyable. I ride them frequently. And so, yeah, that's about it. Our main goal was just, people are going to be riding through here no matter what, and we want to show them the best way through our town as a matter of pride. And this route is really beautiful. You get to see the Granite Dells, Butte Creek, Granite Mountain, and so, yeah. And of course, you take riders past a lot of amenities, so a lot of local businesses, grocery stores, motels, a lot of bike tours stay in motels. They call them credit card bike tours. So one way or another, they're going to run a ride through our beautiful town, so let's pick the best route and roll out the red carpet and bring them on in. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Russ, you have more?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank the council for creating the process that led to this. You may all remember, you know, back in January when this route was on the table for approval, and among other people, I stepped to the microphone and said, "Well, you know, there are parts of this route," and I called out Willow Creek in particular that are not quote-unquote "suitable," you know, to invite touring bicyclists to come through on. And soon thereafter, all of you got together at a working session and authorized Jean to go forward with a working group to, among other things, consider alternatives to this route 79. But some of the other stuff that we did over the intervening several months was to lay the groundwork for creating, or I should say reinstating, a standing advisory committee that would advise Public Works and the council on an ongoing basis about accessibility and safety issues affecting pedestrians and bicyclists throughout the city. And so you're going to see a couple of other pieces of our work coming to you in the coming weeks. There's a piece in front of the Planning Commission on Thursday morning, which is an update of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, which hasn't been revised since 2003. And then after the new council and the new mayor are seated, we're hoping to bring a proposal to actually reinstate this standing committee so that we can have ongoing advice. I have a lot of other stuff written down here, but I'm going to save it for the Willow Creek piece later in the day. But thank you all for facilitating this process. Thank Jean for spearheading it. And Paul Catan is also in the room.
Right. My apologies, Paul. I didn't see you hiding behind the American flag.
Yeah, we had 12 or 15 people in the room. Everybody pretty much tried to show up. In the early going, it was twice a month, and then we got it down to once a month, and we pushed through, as I said, three pretty substantial agenda items, one of which is this proposal to revise the route. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Russ. Did you have a comment, Chris?
I would, but Jim's in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Greg, you there?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I think as the attorney, I could probably agree if I'm not mistaken, unless otherwise posted, every street in the city of Prescott is legal for a bicycle. That's just the way the world is. And to be very candid with you, I think that if you look at what's being proposed, simply has to do with signage advising folks who come here, whether they're invited or they come here uninvited, they do come here, and they are going to ride their bicycles, and they are going to ride them on the streets of Prescott, and in fact, the matter, they can legally do so. What is not in the package is anything mandating that the city of Prescott go into its limited coffers to accommodate bicyclists above and beyond what they're already legally entitled to. So it would be very difficult for me to sit here and say I don't agree that it's okay to sign the city based on the people who live in the city and use the city in a manner that is more conducive to direct people through the city on their bicycles in a, I don't want to use the word orderly, but whether it be for scenic purposes or distribution purposes or whatever the case would be, in an orderly fashion rather than have them all over the place when they hit the city and they don't even know the city. I think the signage is a good thing for health and public safety purposes. So I'm in disagreement with you on this one. I do agree with it. So there you go.
And Mayor, my comment was real similar to Jim's. You know, I think when they ride on the side of the road, that's really a courtesy by the bicycle riders, because they have every right to that lane of traffic that a car does. So I agree with Councilman Lamerson.
Anything? Steve, comments? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the route for United States Bicycle Route 79 through the city of Prescott as recommended by the bicycle working group.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Nay, no.
Passes 6 to 1. Councilman Lozelle dissenting.
Okay. Okay, let's move into the regular agenda. Item A. And my understanding is that the applicant, for reasons that just happened, was not available to be here, but since it's a restaurant license, we'll go ahead and let's act on it. So go ahead, item A.
Item 2A, public hearing and consideration of a new liquor license application for a Series 11 hotel motel with restaurant liquor license from Andrea Domon Lukowicz, applicant for La Quinta Inn and Suites located at 4499 Highway 69. Mayor and council, the police department has reviewed this application and found it to be in compliance with state law, and the community development department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received. And that is correct. The applicant called this morning and informed us that, unfortunately, their representative had to be called out of town, so they're not here, but they understood if you wanted to continue it.
Okay. Any comments from the public since the applicant is not here? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Vote, please. Okay, let's, do we have a motion to approve the...
Yes, yes.
Passes unanimously.
Move to approve the recommendation for liquor license application number 11133034 for a Series 11 hotel motel restaurant license for La Quinta Inn and Suites, Prescott Convention Center located at 4499 Highway 69.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Yes.
Passes, Councilman Kukneo? Passes 6 to 1. Councilman Arnold dissenting.
Okay, move along. Item B.
Item 2B, adoption of resolution number 4308-1517, accepting and approving the recommendations of the Airport Area Ad Hoc Steering Group for location of the new passenger terminal at the West Site.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
Good afternoon, Joe.
Today, I'm here to discuss the terminal building siting assessment. On June 2nd, earlier this year, council received a presentation by Dibble Engineering and Nicholas J. Pella Associates on a terminal building siting assessment that was conducted at PRC. The assessment considered two siting options that were originally presented in the airport's 2010 master plan update. Both of these sites are city-owned, and on the screen behind you, you have a map that shows the two sites, the east site, which is on off of Melville Road, and the west site, which is proximate to the current terminal location. The sites were evaluated on the basis of a projected 10,000 annual deployments, growing to 50,000 deployments over the next 10, or over the next 20-plus years. The assessment proposed a phased development process of a terminal facility, starting with an initial phase of 9,000 square feet and achieving a 47,000-square-foot structure at full buildout. The assessment noted that both of the proposed sites could accommodate the terminal at full buildout without requiring any additional acreage acquisition. The assessment did consider the possibility of building a tiered terminal structure, starting with the land access from the Melville Road on the east site, with phased development that would elevate construction to land above Melville, which is approximately 40 to 50 feet higher. However... Melville, which is approximately 40 to 50 feet higher. However, with this elevation, there was considerable more cost to the terminal, something to the tune of about $2 to $3 million more. And as a result, that option was subsequently removed from further consideration. The assessment included a comprehensive look at both cost and non-cost structures, or factors such as the ability to expand the facility, disruption of airport operations, eaves of access, environmental impacts. In reviewing the data presented by Dibble and Pella, the implication or the data pointed to the west site as being the preferred location. With the completion of the assessment, the council and council's presentation report was provided to the Airport Area Ad Hoc Steering Group for their review. And over a period of about two months, the steering group arrived at some key findings and recommendations. Two members of the steering group are here with us today, Dr. Robin Sabata, Chair of the Business Department and 20 years of aviation experience with Embry-Riddle, and Mr. Dave Schinglecker, a retired executive with General Dynamics Space Division. And I would like to invite Dr. Sabata and Mr. Schinglecker to come up with your approval to make a few comments. And Mr. Schinglecker will present the findings and recommendations of the steering group review.
Great.
Come on up. Thanks for being here. You know, I know it's easy for him to get here. How did you get out of the classroom?
It was kind of rough today. Well, thank you for allowing the members of the Airport Ad Hoc Steering Group to come and speak to the council today and to the mayor. We really appreciate the opportunity to step forward to the council as you continue in your continuing effort to promote the future growth and development of the airport and the airport area. We share the firm belief that with a reasonable level of planning and investment in our airport, our community will see increased and improved air transportation services and much-needed economic growth. We realize that meaningful development of the airport will not happen overnight. It will be through a series of thoughtful steps. This is just the first of many steps that will be needed to enable the airport to improve, to attract quality service partners, to maintain community and safety and security goals, and to provide the returns that the community expects with its continued investment. The airport, and particularly the terminal building, will serve as a centerpiece in our airport area development vision. This was important early on to determine the optimal location for future terminal development. This effort and our recommendations are reflected in today's resolution of the mayor and the city council as it considers the recommendations of the Airport Area Steering Group pertaining to the terminal building site assessment. Following months of study by the consultant and our careful review of the consultant's report, we concur with the report findings that suggest that the west site will offer a significant advantage over the east site, due largely to reduced roadway improvement costs. As the consultant's report suggests, this decision will allow the city of Prescott to continue on the pathway toward defining and improving an airport area development vision. The next steps include a continued visioning for the long-term redevelopment of the airport and surrounding areas, an air service study focused on improving commercial air service options at Prescott Airport. This will enable us to better position ourselves for air service funding at the federal level. In closing, we confirm our support for the west site, and we remain committed to safe and efficient growth of the airport, the airport area, and the entire region. It's been a pleasure to serve on the Airport Steering Group, and we remain available to answer any questions you might have about the steering group, the processes through which we came about these decisions. Thank you.
Don't run off. Rob, you may get a question.
Okay.
Anyone, council? It's hard to get this expertise here, and particularly at the price she's getting paid. So, well, Robin, I'll just have a comment. Working closely with this group for a couple of years, we had all volunteers from all walks of life, all areas of industry, that took the hardest look at this part of Prescott that I've seen in my 51 years here. And everything was carefully analyzed, was given equal weight, east and west, and it had become obvious that there was only one site before it was over. So, thanks for all your help. And Dave, it's your turn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, council, you just gave my closing remarks. Thank you. That's very good.
I'm sorry.
Very well said. The entire steering group that we have is totally aligned on what Robin presented to you. We, as a group, over the two-month period that Jeff mentioned, looked at the pros and cons of the east side and the west side. We reviewed the output that the consultants gave us for reasonableness, and it didn't make sense. Were the weightings correct and the scaling factors? When you got to the end of that, it basically showed that the two sites, from a facility point of view, were about equal. But what really made the difference was road improvements. As you may have seen, on the east side, it was $4.4 million on the low side to improve the roads, and on the west side, it was approximately $1 million. And so, it only makes sense when all else is equal to go with the west site. So, our recommendation is to go with the west site for the terminal facility, and furthermore, that the city undertake a master planning process for the long-term development of the land adjacent to and west of the proposed terminal site. And thank you for the opportunity to volunteer and help the city.
Dave, I'll mention that I know that the management and the council in the future will have need from time to time to bring the group back together, and I hope that that can happen. And because it's, this is a one-to-20-year project, depending on circumstances along the way. So, I hope that those that will be available when they're needed will be willing to come back.
I will be for sure. And knowing the other members of the group, I think they are too. It's been a pleasure for me to work in that group, unbiased, no access to grind, no preconceived notion, no hidden agendas. It was truly to look from an honest point of view of what needs to be done and to try to make honest recommendations to you all. So, we're here to help.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks for spending your retirement in Prescott. Counsel? Nothing? Any comments from the public? Good job. Jeff, good job. Thanks for keeping the herd together. And so, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4308-1517.
Second.
Motion made in second. Let's vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure there's work to be done. Okay. Let's go to item C.
Item two C, acceptance of Arizona Department of Transportation Grant Number E6S2H for 90% funding for design of upgrading the runway lighting systems, runway signage and distance remaining signs at the Ernest A. Love Field Airport in the amount of $151,200.
Good afternoon, Mayor, honorable members of council. Now, this is a design phase grant for the lighting systems. In the summer, the city council did approve an award for a construction phase grant for an electrical upgrade project. And basically, that $3 million-plus project funded the construction phase for all of the electrical elements, including a generator system, a new power vault, relocating all of the lines within the airfield runway system, taxiway systems, everything basically within the control systems. What this project basically is, is to fund the lighting phase, which is to replace all of the existing 20-plus-year-old runway and taxiway lights. It's also to install new runway distance remaining markers on the runway that's required for commercial service operations. And this, again, this is a design phase grant. It's 90% funded by ADOT. The other 10% is from the local aviation fund of $18,800. This, the negotiation for the scope of the work, as well as the design phase, will be pending in February. That is when the construction phase for the infrastructure project will be completed. That way, we'll have a much better idea of the scope for this lighting upgrade system. So, in the future, if the city council, again, this action is just to accept the ADOT grant, a future council action could be to accept the negotiation with our design consultant for the actual design fees that would be funded, you know, through this grant. The design phase, again, is in preparation for a federal aviation administration grant of up to 95%. The anticipated construction phase cost will be around $2.3 million, which will be pending, and it will be pending the future city council consideration. That could be, again, funding permitted from the FAA. That could be offered to the city council in the city of Prescott in this summer.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Comments from the public? Need a motion?
Mayor moved to accept Arizona Department of Transportation Grant Number E6S2H in the amount of $151,200.
Second.
Motion made in second. Did vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, item D?
Item D, acceptance of Arizona Department of Transportation Grant Number E6S2G for 90% funding of an environmental study for the obstruction mitigation of navigable airspace per Federal Aviation Regulation Part 77 at the Ernest A. Love Field Airport in the amount of $32,400.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
Yes, sir.
This project is basically to obtain a categorical exclusion or to complete an environmental study for some potential obstructions that were identified as part of a master plan that was completed earlier, I'm going to say in 2011. This environmental phase is basically, it precludes a design phase, which certainly precludes any construction or any identification removal and/or marking any of the obstructions that are identified in and surrounding the airport. The recent master plan, again, that was completed, identified over 300 potential obstructions. And of those 300 obstructions, that include trees, buildings, even landscaping, other facilities that are within the approach areas of all of the runways at the airport, are part of what this environmental study is for. So, the 90% of the ADOT project, which is $32,400, coupled with $3,600 from local funding, is a total project estimate for the construction, I'm sorry, for the environmental phase determination only of a total of $36,000. This obstruction removal was identified by both the FAA and ADOT as a high priority safety consideration, and they wanted to move this priority up as far as the, as far as the grant funding programs as a high priority for the airport.
John, we're talking about trees.
Some of them, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. We went through that, what, two years ago?
I'm not positive of that, but I assume it was several years ago, yes, sir.
At that time, it was rats.
A lot of that was trimming that have grown back rather well. This time, they'll have to be removed?
That'll be part of the environmental determination. We have had some discussions with the Federal Aviation Administration Environmental Coordinator, and there was some discussion about the impact to the project that does include some of the trees that are considered obstructions. To what level do we top the trees? Do the trees actually, you know, what's the lifespan if we, you know, topped it to a certain degree? My question to the FAA was, well, what if we just topped the trees, you know, to one inch above the ground? Would that satisfy the requirements? To which I did not receive a favorable response, so.
Well, with them trees, it won't take long. They're back anyway. But anyway.
I was going to ask the same question, Mayor, about having the study done once before. Did we not do that?
I think what the master plan was is basically to identify those. What I'm understanding with this project is, once the environmental determination is made, to proceed with the design phase in order to identify, you know, all of the areas, including trees, buildings, again, landscape, any navigable impacts that were identified, in order to identify. We can light those as far as the buildings are concerned. The trees, yeah, may need to require some sort of a trimming or a topping. Some may be required to be removed if, again, it was determined environmentally that it was going to be too large of an impact to the trees, that they would not be able to respond. So, yeah, I think council member, to answer your question, this was part of the study, and so, this is the actual environmental phase of that.
I was a little concerned last time when they were talking about ducks and, you know, rabbits and stuff. How do you mitigate ducks and rabbits on an open field, you know, in a navigable area? How do you do that? I mean, I'm the guy that can go out there and count them for you, but-
That's part of the signage deal.
I mean, you just, you have a very difficult time keeping them from going through the fence or flying into the airspace. So, is that part of this as well?
The fencing project is more as a safety and security issue, and you're exactly right. That's why we do have the chain link fencing to keep most wildlife out. And this is areas that aren't necessarily, they're inside the fence and outside the fence. So, but it really is to identify anything. The FAA does have certain criteria regarding navigable airspace and the approach slope for any aircraft that's landing or taking off on all of the runways that we have at the airport.
I appreciate that. I'm still having a hard time keeping my golf ball out of there, so.
Very similar to what you and Steve were just talking about. Last time, we did like about an $84,000 environmental study. And you had to do, it got precipitated, I guess, by a little rodent of some kind that ate through something out there at the airport towers. And it chewed through some wires or something. So, FAA, in its infinite wisdom, which I think is probably, and I mean it affectionately, in its infinite wisdom, said we needed to go figure out what all kinds of things we have out there. And I don't think there's a chain link fence that's been designed to keep out a mouse. And very similar to what Blair was saying, we also had to do bird flight type of stuff because we had a couple of ducks swack a plane or something, you know. So, I mean, there are things that we have had to look at from time to time that had to do with the location of the airport next to a golf course that has ponds that by causing effect, attract little animals and things like that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Okay.
The message here is, you take their money and they have a seat at the table. And now, we do business that way.
This is just one more of those furthering steps, though, to get to where we really want to be with our airport. And it's a necessary, necessary evil so to be, so to be said that we have to go through this step to get to the next step. So, I will support-
Yeah, Steve, exactly. And by cause and effect, because of where the airport's placed, where the golf course is placed, et cetera, from time to time, you're going to get deer, elk, ducks, coyotes. And there's things that we have to do to make sure that people that are navigating airplanes aren't running into those any more than is legitimate, I would assume.
Comments from the public?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go.
So, we do this study, and things don't get rolling to where we want in, let's say, three years. I don't know if there's, does this study expire at any time that we'd be required to redo it?
Yeah, normally, environmental determinations do have a shelf life of about three years. The anticipation is for the FAA to award a grant for the design phase in next fiscal year, and then the actual construction phase the preceding year. So, yeah, the hope is to have a continuation of this project. Once the environmental determination is made, then the clock does start ticking. The, hopefully, the design phase will take around six months before we can actually solicit and receive a grant for the construction phase.
So, as long as we keep the momentum going, we shouldn't have to repeat this process?
That is correct.
Okay.
There'll be an action- There, there'll be an action part of, of this project. Things will happen.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor? Move to accept Arizona Department of Transportation grant number E6S2G in the amount of $32,400.
Second.
Motion made in second. The vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Item E.
Item E, award of city contract number 2016-085 to Wayne Harding and Associates for appraisal services on an as-needed basis for various real property transactions in a total amount not to exceed $90,000 for the three-year term and including a provision for up to two one-year extensions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Don Hirsch with the City Public Works. Um, this, this item is to award three-year contract for appraisal services on an as-needed basis for the city real property projects to Wayne Harding and Associates in an amount not to exceed $90,000. Contract may, by mutual consent, be extended for up to two additional one-year terms in an amount not to exceed $30,000 per year. Contract total, including extensions, for the five years shall not exceed $150,000. Uh, as some background, acquisition of new rights of ways and easements are frequently required to facilitate delivery of capital improvement projects. Additionally, the city may desire to dispose of city real property. These transactions require appraisal services to determine a fair market value. On Octo, on August 20th, 2015, the city received proposals from appraisal companies interested in providing the as-needed services for the city various projects involving real property. Three responses were received. Wayne Harding and Associates from Scottsdale, Roger Dunlap and Associates from Scottsdale, and Selon and Associates from Tempe were the three that, uh, sent to promote, uh, proposals. Pursuant to the selection procedures, professional services, and the qualifications and fee structures were evaluated for each firm, resulting in the following ranking. Wayne Harding and Associates was, uh, top-ranked, and then Selon and Associates, and then Roger Dunlap. Now, the contract provides for on-call services on an as-needed basis, project by pipe, project. Billing is at prices for services as included in the fee schedule that was in the council packet. Uh, there are many upcoming projects that may require right-of-way acquisitions necessitating appraisal services, uh, and that's also included in your, uh, in your packet. There's quite a extensive list of projects that are coming up. Uh, financial impact, the fiscal year '16 funding is available for appraisal services from the one cent sales tax for streets, water fund, and sewer fund. The estimated costs are included in each of the individual projects that we're, the cities are working on in their budgets, uh, as the services are required. And as a side note, too, um, most of the, uh, property valuations that are needed by the city, I actually do them, there are occasions where we may need to get a, a partial release from a mortgage company on somebody's property, and one of the requirements from mortgage companies for releasing, according to their regulations, just have a, a certified appraisal, and that's what this particular item is for. Any, have any questions?
Was it you, John?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just, um, looking at their schedule of fees, if any of these lead to litigation, um, their hourly rates for trial services would come out of this contract?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments from the public, question? Okay. Do you have a motion, counsel?
Mayor, move to award city contract number 2016-085 to Wayne Harding and Associates.
Second.
Motion made in the second. The vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Item F.
Item F, award of city contract number 2016-088 for the Willow Creek Road realignment project to Fan Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $5,47,653.
And Mayor, due to a possible conflict of interest, I'm gonna step away from this one.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council.
Good afternoon.
Um, this item is for the award of a construction contract to Fan Contracting for the Willow Creek Road realignment project, essentially the area in the yellow on the map here. Uh, the roadway realignment includes about 7,500 lineal feet of new 12-inch water line that which will loop, uh, the city's water system. The interim road segment that's being built within this right-of-way contains one lane each direction with a six-foot wide paved shoulder. The ultimate, let's see, uh, cross-section, uh, does include, uh, either a bike lane on the street or a class-one bike path, uh, in the ultimate right-of-way, when the road is, uh, built to its ultimate standard at some point in the future, uh, with any, uh, adjacent land development. Uh, the fencing for the project was awarded, uh, two weeks ago, and that is under construction at this point for the project. Uh, this, uh, just a reminder, this is a joint-city, county-funded, uh, construction project through an IGA, and this project is also, uh, the second, uh, piece in the puzzle for the 89 widening project, uh, which, uh, was just completed north of the roundabout there at Deepwater Ranch. Uh, the next segment between that Deepwater Ranch roundabout and just south of the 89A interchange is under design. Uh, this segment will function as a, uh, bypass during construction and also provide a better, um, access into the city and out of the city for, uh, traffic. The bidding process, uh, was publicly noticed for two consecutive weeks. Uh, there was a mandatory pre-bid meeting on October 15th, which a number of contractors attended. Uh, we did receive four bids, uh, on the due date. Fan Contracting, CLM Earthmovers, Capital Improvements, Inc., and Aswell Paving and Supply. Uh, Fan Contracting had the, uh, lowest bid amount, and the engineer's estimate was at six point, uh, just under 6.3 million. Uh, we did conduct a pre-award, uh, meeting with Fan Contracting to discuss his bid, construction process, how he's going to approach the project, et cetera, and at the conclusion of the meeting, uh, we deemed, uh, that the, uh, bid was responsive and balanced, and we're recommending the award, uh, to Fan Contracting, the amount noted in the report. Uh, the, uh, the length of the project is about 330 calendar days, so it should be completed by October of next year, uh, with construction starting just after Thanksgiving or around Thanksgiving up in that area. Funding for the project is available through the Streets and Open Space Fund and Water Funds, and 50 percent of the project cost through the IGA with Yavapai County, and the city's standard construction contract, uh, will be used for this project. Um, the standard warranty for CIP projects is in effect for a two-year period after the work is completed. Uh, the contractor, designer are both in the audience if there's any questions, um, and I'll be glad to answer anything that you have as well.
Okay. Why don't you hang tight, and, uh, we also have an audience, our, our partner on this project, the Chair of the Board of Supervisor, Craig, would you like to come up and, uh, make any comments regarding the county?
You know, we've all worked very hard, and I wanted to point out that city staff, personally, Henry Hatch, and other staff, really worked very hard on this project and always coordinated with our folks in Public Works, and we're, we have a real good project going forward that's mutually beneficial, and I wanna say that for those pundits that would say that we don't get along, I would say they are incorrect. I think we do very well together. Thank you.
They're just wishing, that's all. Uh, thanks, Craig. Appreciate you being here. Steve, if you had a question?
Well, I wanna thank the county and staff as well. I think, you know, part of what we need to do and we're chastised often not doing is long-range planning, and this is a project that's been well-planned a long time ago that's finally coming together to do some very beneficial things, not only for the county, but for the region. Uh, the only question I'd have, Steve, and I, I didn't hear it, is there not a sidewalk on either side of this road?
Uh, at this, at term stage, no, there's not a sidewalk at the current time. Ultimately, when the ultimate section would have curb, gutters, sidewalks, uh, when there's development out in that area.
So, that, you expect that to come back in the future?
Yes.
So, do we expect sometime in the future to come back with a multipurpose trail for bikes and...
It's very possible. The right-of-way that we have, uh, negotiated with the property owner is wide enough to do our four-lane, uh, minor arterial, which has got four travel lanes, a off-road bike, uh, path with sidewalks.
Okay. So, in the future, those things can be accommodated?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to say, I think this is, this is a great project moving forward. It's a result, uh, I serve on the, the Board of Simpo with, uh, Supervisor Brown, and, um, this is a result of the politicians getting out of the way, letting the engineers and smart people work, and here we got it. We're facing it. One question I do have is, I know that this, this, as I pointed out, this is part two of a three-part project, really. The road that cuts over to McCurdy, when is, is that gonna be constructed in the 89 phase or the Willow Creek phase?
Uh, good question. Uh, the road, uh, known as James Lane, uh, which is the extension of McCurdy going towards the west that will intersect the Willow Creek Road realigned, uh, roadway, is part of the south segment of 89 project. That's step three of a, actually, it's a four-part segment. There is a city widening project of 89 that's in our capital program as well.
Just thinking, if we, if we're gonna use this as a bypass, that's gonna be hard to get to that golf course when the, uh, when construction's going on. Just a, just a thought. And, um, as we look down the road, there's kind of a fourth part of this project that's just kinda looming out there, and I think, you know, we, we tried to address it, there was an outcry, we didn't do anything about it, but when this third piece comes into play, where we got that road improved, four lanes divided all the way to 89, we're gonna be shoving a lot of traffic down to the Fippen intersection, which we haven't done anything about yet, and it's still a dangerous intersection, and I'd like to get, maybe in the future, councils can, uh, do something to ensure that when we funnel all the traffic down into a single lane, that there's a, a better way so we don't have crashes at that intersection.
Before we get off of this, uh, Claire May, uh, the, the blue line is a water line.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, I'm not aware of a, a road anticipated that would follow that blue line. The road that would be anticipated would hook into the golf course road.
Right about here. It would traverse over and connect through here.
Yeah, Mayor, it's not shown on this particular exhibit because it is not a part of this project. It is part of the 89 widening project.
Yeah. But, uh, I want to clarify that don't anticipate a road where the blue line is now.
Correct.
Uh, because that's a water line.
It is a water line.
Yes, okay.
And I'd just like to, can I clarify one thing?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when we talked about bypass, that's a, an, in addition to 89, which will remain open during construction. It's not gonna, 89 is not gonna be closed, so access to the golf course will be available. It's just that this is offering a relief valve or another way for people to traverse into town and out of town.
Good. And Mayor, we got ADOT to pay for that road, too.
Yeah. You did a good job. Jane?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make note of the fact that the engineering firm that the city contracted with is Dibble.
Correct.
They held an open house at the, um, golf course.
That is correct.
Was that last year?
Yes, it was.
I believe. And so, none of this design should come as a surprise. There were quite a few people there, and it was well-attended. Um, I thought it was very, very helpful to have, um, an open house to show people what the plan is and what the future possibilities are, and I really, truly appreciate allowing for a separated bike path, but in the interim, having that six-foot wide paved shoulder, which will be not only good for bicyclists, but emergency pull-off.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
That's good. Steve, you had something else?
Yeah, one, one more question as, as we move through this. Is there a plan on that road that's a connector, that road that's not shown on here to have a sidewalk on one side or the other of that road? Has it been planned yet?
I, I'm not as familiar with that because that's part of the ADOT project, but I believe they're looking at the same interim section that we have on Willow Creek Road within a right-of-way that does allow for sidewalks in the future.
Okay. I just hope, you know, I love this future stuff, but I hope somewhere in, in, going down the road, uh, that we actually use some of that one-cent sales money to do those things. We have no idea how this is gonna develop in the future, but one thing I can assure everybody, it doesn't matter whether it's commercial or residential, there are gonna be people out there walking and riding bikes, and we need to plan for that.
Uh, just a comment, Steve, the, uh, this is a real, was, the purpose was a realignment of Willow Creek Road, and Willow Creek Road has not had sidewalks or curb guttings at all. Uh, as 89A is redeveloped through the airport area, I'm sure that that's where there'll be consideration, uh, for sidewalks and other things because 89A still exists between, uh, the roundabout and 89A. It, it'll just look different and, and be much more efficient and wider, okay?
Yes.
Uh, anyone else on council? Okay. Henry?
Thank you, Mayor. You have all of these stated, but if, okay, I would like to really express our appreciation to our partner, the county, especially Supervisor Brown. They've been a better partner than we could imagine, always, they're always supportive, and they have provided a lot of good guidance and information that really made this a better project. I just wanna say thank you.
Good. Thank you, Henry. Uh, comments from the audience?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Go.
Um, Craig, I'm gonna hit this rhetorical drum time and time again. When the headline says we just spent $5 million on a road, um, this $5 million cannot, or can, as you answered the question, uh, in our general fund to help our, uh, our police and fire and everything else that's in that fund.
Uh, Councilman Lozelle, Mayor and Council, uh, the funding of this project consists of several sources, or is from several sources. As indicated in the staff memo, approximately half of the project cost, 50 percent, up to $3 million, is coming from Yavapai County through an intergovernmental agreement. So, that, uh, is not a, that's an external funding source that has nothing to do with our general fund. The other approximate half of the, of the project, uh, is also from other than general fund sources, streets and open space and the water fund. So, there is zero general fund money involved in implementing this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
Eric, can I make one comment?
Yes, you may.
Craig Brown, Board of Supervisors, thanks again. I wanna make something perfectly clear. Without this Willow Creek realignment, there is no 89 South project. Without it, it can't go forward. It's very clear that we have to do this. It's the first step in a three-phase, uh, project. So, we have to move forward with this, or we're not gonna go to 89A.
Well, without relieving the southbound traffic and northbound, uh, 89, 89 would be almost impossible to do a project through there. It's too confined. You're correct. And, thanks for those comments. Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to award city contract number 2016-088 for the Willow Creek Road realignment project to Fan Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $5,47,653.
Second.
Motion made in second. The vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Yes.
Uh, passes 6 to 0.
Okay, item G.
Item G, presentation of FEMA National Flood Insurance Draft Rate Maps.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. The next item is a informational update on the Federal Emergency Management Agency map update. Mark DeBroy, the city's Drainage and Flood Plane Administrator, um, will provide information and background on the map updates. Uh, Mark will also provide information on the National Insurance Program, new technologies being used for flood plane mapping, flood plane statistics, uh, and FEMA's schedule for implementing the map revisions, um, and also information on the proposed public outreach. Drainage and flood plane issues are definitely a subject of interest. In 2014, the city received over 150 calls, and so far, in 2015, uh, the drainage unit already received over 200 calls. So, with that said, Matt Paul. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Charles. I am indeed Mark DeBroy, the city drainage engineer and flood plane administrator. I'll try to keep it fairly brief today. Like he says, this is just an update. As many of you are already aware, we've, uh, been in a long-term effort to update all of our FEMA map products, so I will talk about that. Let's see if I can advance the slide here. I'm just getting over a cold, so I'm a little bit throaty, but I think my voice will hang in there. The, I included this slide, uh, 'cause it's, it's pertinent to today. The, uh, uh, this was a, a magazine article from 1984, and as you can see, this was authored by the then Assistant City Engineer. This was 1984, and, uh, back in September of 83, they had over 14 inches of rain in one day, and there's a parallel to today because Hurricane Patricia that just went through Texas could have easily hit the coast differently and come up and hit us with 20 inches. have easily hit the coast differently and come up and hit us with 20 inches. So we definitely can get pretty big rainfall events here. We were fortunate in that event that it hit mostly in the northwest Prescott area and not through the downtown area, but definitely a reminder that floods indeed can happen in our area. The, before I get into the aspects of the update, I just wanted to go back and give a little bit of background for folks that may not be familiar with the National Flood Insurance Program. It was started in the late '60s, really in response to mounting losses across the United States from folks that were in flood plains and were sustaining damage. In the '40s and '50s, insurance was available to some folks, but it was pretty expensive. But by the '60s, flood insurance was generally unavailable to anybody. So national and state disaster relief programs were really bearing the brunt of all that. And they were spending a lot of money and realizing over time that people were rebuilding, but rebuilding in the same places in the same ways, and they were seeing massive repetitive losses. So they kind of called a timeout and said, we really need to put together a program to address flood losses and insurance. So that was the inception of the National Flood Insurance Program. Our community, City of Prescott, we started participating in 1977. That's when we got our initial maps. And the, all the initial maps were prepared by FEMA, kind of on a nationwide basis because at the start of the program in 1968, they had no maps. So they were starting from scratch on that. So the participation for the National Flood Insurance Program is voluntary on part of communities, but I'm not aware of any community in the United States that doesn't participate nowadays. The, in order for local residents to obtain flood insurance, the community has to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So there's benefits and responsibilities that kind of go both ways with our participation in this. On the FEMA side, they provide affordable flood insurance and by affordable, meaning that you really can't get a policy elsewhere. And Congress, of course, sets the rates for those policies, but, so they make flood insurance available. And on our side of it, as the local flood plane administrator, we agree to certain things to help reduce the long-term and repetitive losses and to stop that cycle of loss. So we do get to locally administer all of the requirements of that program and much of it has to do with enforcing the flood plane development standards, which means elevating structures, flood-proofing them, and a variety of other technical aspects of how to minimize damage to these. One of the other obligations that we have under the program is to obtain and utilize accurate mapping information, and that's what we're really talking about here with our map update program. The, as I said, the original maps that we had, and there's kind of an example on the right, top right there of the old maps, they were originally created in the '70s and back then, they were using simple modeling techniques and had pretty rough topographic data. So they did the best they could on a large scale nationwide, but almost all of our mapping is from that time timeframe. And the old maps, as you can see in the upper right, they had a shaded area that was just superimposed on a grid of the sections and townships and the roadways. Usually at a thousand scale map, so kind of hard to read, really kind of cumbersome to use. The revised maps, and we have 10 map panels that cover the entire city and we're revising all 10 of those map panels. And there's kind of a little example in the lower right there. There's a lot of, in the modern era, we've got a lot better topographic data to use to accurately map those. We have updated rainfall data that we are using for those. And more importantly, we've got newer analysis and mapping techniques and tools, which is a wonderful part of the digital age. Back in the '70s when they did these, nobody had a computer on their desks. If you wanted to run a computer model, you had to do it on the mainframe at the college kind of thing. So they tended to be sparse in their modeling approaches there. The, several of the tools that we are really looking forward to having from this in this new age are tools that will help us administer the flood plane, including things like depth and velocity information, since that's certainly critical to making sure that a structure is properly elevated and able to withstand the flooding forces. And of course, our new maps will be based on aerial photos, which will make it a lot easier to pick out what structures are affected, what properties are affected and that kind of thing. So we're really looking forward to getting some of these tools. One of the things that we do have on our website that is active now is also a FEMA supplied us with a three-dimensional kind of overview. So where if you go on the link on our website, it'll take you to Google Maps and you can actually kind of do a little fly-through and it shows where the flood plains are. So there's some kind of whiz-bang tools there, too, to help for visualization. So we're real excited about a lot of those tools that will help us. One of the questions that inevitably comes up with the map revision is how many properties are going to be affected and in what ways are people going to be affected? We did a fairly simple, our GIS group put together this data for us, looking at our existing maps and our proposed maps. And the little, in the city, there's about more than 27,000 total parcels, distinct parcels within the city boundary, which is a lot of parcels when you think about it. And there's over 24,000 total structures. And they filtered out sheds and barns that were, you know, less than 400 square feet. We're trying to get a count on more real buildings, but that gives you an order of magnitude of how many are out there. So on the column headings there, I've got a number of parcels in the flood plain and number of structures in the flood plain, keeping in mind that flood plain insurance and regulations apply to structures, not parcels necessarily. So with our existing flood plain maps that were developed in the '70s, we've got a little over 1,600 parcels that are identified as being impacted by flood plain and on those, about 928 structures. On the new maps, the number goes up a little bit to a shade, you know, over 1,700 and about 955 structures. So overall, there's going to be an increase in the number of properties and structures that will be identified as being within the flood plain, but it's not a huge percentage increase. The other two numbers below it are also kind of telling because it's not that there's just another 25 structures going in, it's that 359 are going to be coming out and 386 going in. So there's actually a broader number of people that will be affected by it. Some will be happy that they're going to no longer be counted in the flood plain and some will be unhappy that they are going to be considered in the flood plain. But that's kind of how the numbers work out on that.
Can I ask you a question?
You bet.
Mayor, on the structures in the flood plain, how many of those have taken measures to elevate out of the flood plain? Does that include everybody that's in it or does that include parcels or properties at risk?
The numbers are fairly raw in the sense that if GIS can identify, because we have a layer that shows buildings and we can just overlay that with our flood plain boundary maps, that we can say, well, gosh, we've got 928 in. We know a lot about some of those, but many of those predate the original mapping in the '70s and we have no direct knowledge of whether they're high enough or flood-proofed. We only have specific information about structures that were constructed after 1977 when our participation began. So it's, there's a, there's a broad range of folks out there.
Okay. Steve has a question.
For me, there's really never an appropriate time to ask things, but this seems pretty good for me. As a flood plane administrator with FEMA, is it your responsibility to occasionally check the flood plain, to look at what may be stored in that flood plain that may cause damage or clogging of a bridge, i.e. Willow Creek Road and businesses that are storing inert material in the flood plain and in the bed? Is that your responsibility? And if it is, how do we go about being a city and getting that rectified?
The answer is yes, and I know of the situation of which you speak because that is something that we have received several calls on and are monitoring. There are certain rules with FEMA, certain things you, there aren't generally prohibitions against storing inert materials in the flood plains. There's not a strict prohibition on that. There is a prohibition on blocking flow and there are technical requirements that go with that. So we are looking into that one. But yes, we, it is part of our responsibility that, number one, to regulate that we don't have any permanent obstructions within the flood plain and to regulate development within that.
Reason why that comes up, part of my heartburn is, is that we're working hard on cleaning up our lakes and getting the silt out of them and looking into the future. And I find it ironic that we would allow somebody to store inert material above the lake, that if there's a flood event, it ends up as silt material in the lake. It makes no sense to me and I think that we need to take a hard look at what we're really trying to do here.
Yes, yes, I agree.
If a structure is mapped out of the flood plain under the new FEMA maps, can the property owner still purchase flood plain insurance?
Absolutely. And that is one of the aspects of the program that FEMA likes us to stress is that literally anybody can buy flood insurance through FEMA. You don't, you can be in the middle of the desert, you can be on the top of a mountain, you can be in the river and they will sell you a flood plain policy. Now, the premiums can vary quite a bit depending on the circumstances of the structure and the flood plain, but yes, they definitely encourage folks to do that. I've read statistics from FEMA about flood damages and a very significant majority of flood damage is incurred by people that are not in flood plains. And so we definitely, even as a city, encourage folks to get flood insurance. If you're not in a flood plain, an identified flood plain, you actually get a really good premium rate because you're not mapped into a hazard zone. So it's really a good policy for a lot of folks if there's any possibility of local flooding or anything else because they are, that aspect, local flooding, is not covered by your general homeowner's insurance policy.
That's something I would strongly recommend people consider as I think back on what happened in Flagstaff in the Schultz Fire and Flood. They were on the slope of a hillside downstream from a forest where the streams changed course as a result of that storm. And suddenly, they found themselves flooded out and some people lost everything.
Absolutely. And we can face the same thing here, especially with the fires that we have had, that it radically changes the watershed and you can get flooding where you didn't have it before. You bet.
Right.
The next couple of slides I had are kind of just a snapshot of how the mapping will be changing across the city. This particular one is just a piece of Granite Creek. And I don't have a pointer, but the, this is where the confluence with Miller Creek is. So it's through the downtown area, there's the courthouse in the picture there. The blue shaded area are areas that are currently in the flood plain according to our current mapping and will still remain in the flood plain with our new mapping. So even though some of the water surfaces will go up, some will go down, there are changes within that blue zone, but in that blue zone, it's in the flood plain now and will continue to be in the flood plain. The yellow zone is areas where the new mapping will show those to be a part of the new identified hazard area. And then the green are areas that will be coming out of that designated area. So you can see in this, there's some yellow, some green. I don't know if it's 50/50, but it's pretty close, as you could tell by the numbers on how many homes were going in versus coming out. But this just gives you an idea. Mainly, the reason these boundaries are changing is because we're doing a better job of accurately identifying where the hazard area is. And that's one thing that I like to point out to folks, we're not putting people in a hazard or taking them out, we're simply doing a better job of recognizing the hazard that does exist so that those that are impacted by it can get flood insurance and be aware of that risk and protect themselves, take measures to protect themselves from it. So citywide, yeah, there's these areas all over. So the next slide, Willow Lake, you can see there's some areas of inundation based on how high the water level can get. So there's an increase on the lower right there in some of the areas. And actually, I think there's some county areas in there. But then there's another swath of green in the lower right that's on the south side of Willow Lake Road that actually had been raised up years ago by developers but wasn't taken out of the flood plain at the time by Lomar. So that'll bring relief to a fair amount of folks over in that area that have had trouble there. So that's a good slide there. This is Willow Creek Tributary. Some of our flood plains were identified by detailed methods years ago, but many of them were done by approximate methods. And this, of course, was during that era when FEMA was trying to do nationwide. So they were using rough information and in a lot of cases, they were estimating things. So the older A zones, which were approximate zones, are going to all change to these AE zones where we have a much better delineation and know the flood depth elevations. So this is a case on the Willow Creek Tributary where it was a zone A and it's going to go to AE and there's a fairly wide area that will be coming in. But conversely, on the Willow Creek itself, up on the upper left there, there's a lot more coming out than going in. So kind of hit and miss all over based on just the accuracy of our new mapping.
So you don't count a lot of the tributaries that go into there that fill up pretty high?
There are many, many water courses that are much smaller, that are kind of below the threshold for this. One of the things that we did was in remapping these, we generally weren't looking to increase the number of water courses that were in the FEMA flood plain. We still, through our ordinances, have the ability to regulate any water course to make sure that people are building high enough or staying out of the flood pass. So we have a whole host of other things that we can do to make sure even outside these flood plains that we are recognizing flood hazards because floods can happen anywhere. But we decided not to encumber more water courses with that designation. There's pros and cons to having the federal oversight on that, but we wanted to make sure that all of the flood plains we do have, that we are doing a better job of accurately identifying the hazard. Another one, this is Miller Creek, North Fork and Miller Creek and a bit of North Fork and Granite Creek. Again, here you can see on the right side, over on the North Fork and Granite, there's a lot of areas that are coming out based on our better mapping. But conversely, on the left, there's a lot of areas that are going in on Miller Creek, on the North Fork and Miller. So there's a give and take on those. This is what we're calling the Virginia Street Wash, which is the one that goes past the Public Works Building downstream. That was an A zone previously, starts up in Acker Park and comes on down through the city.
I got a question.
Yes.
Because of the changes in these maps, are you notifying the residents as well as the businesses that are now going to be increased? So if they don't have flood plain protection or flood hazard protection, they can get that?
Yes, and I will get to that slide. The, let's see, View Creek, there was a lot more coming out than going in, but it's a little bit more sparse development. This slide, this is the Willow Creek Levy. And as some of you may or may not know, the only recognized levy that we have in town as far as FEMA is concerned is this one off of Willow Creek. This area is predominantly multifamily residential apartments and townhouse condos, that type of thing. The Fry's Food Store is the big blue box on the right over there. And I don't have a laser pointer, but the levy really wraps around that whole area. There's a lot of history on that and I won't get too much into it, but the levy was constructed in the '80s and '90s and afforded protection to all those areas behind the levy. Unfortunately, when Hurricane Katrina hit, FEMA decided to unilaterally decertify all levies nationwide. And so they, while they got blamed for flooding in New Orleans, so they said, fine, we'll just decertify them. So they put the burden back on the levy owners to get recertification. Well, this is a private levy, it's on private property, it's not city-owned, so we don't have a direct requirement in that regard. But when they decertified it, they temporarily decided, they said, okay, we will provisionally accredit your levy. They called it a PAL, P-A-L, and that will give you time to get, whoever owns the levy to get reaccreditation for that. Well, in this case, it's not something that's easy to get and that provisional accreditation expires. And so generally speaking, when that expires, all the homes behind the levy just simply go back into the flood plain. What we attempted to do with this, with the consultants, was to do a very careful job of mapping the flood hazards in that area and we used a more fancy two-dimensional computer model to try and get a better handle on which buildings would be affected and which wouldn't. So this slide just kind of gives you an overview of the complexity of that area behind the levy that will be counted.
Is it certified now?
No, it is not. Well, it's provisionally accredited. Theoretically, the provisional accreditation expired in 2009. So when you look at the current maps, it says 2009, but FEMA has allowed it to continue unofficially to be accredited. But that accreditation is going away. So I wanted to include that slide so that you are aware of that. But that is a special area where we've tried to do our best to help the residents get the most realistic information.
I find it interesting that we, the city, approve a subdivision and commercial properties back behind the levy that now the federal government tells us is unsafe and yet we're standing up there saying we're going to wash our hands of anything that may happen in the future. I just find it ironic.
The next slide is, this is the current schedule that we're on and it's The next slide is, this is the current schedule that we're on, and it's been a long process. We started the process back in 2008, early 2009, in terms of all the studies that needed to be done and everything, all the FEMA participation. Normally, when you just update one panel, or for one property, one project, you submit what's called a letter of map revision to FEMA, and they have to act on it in 90 days. In this situation, since they're revising all of our panels, it follows what they call their physical map revision, PMR, process, and that one is a multi-year process, so we've been patient with them, but they've had a lot of data to go through and get ready for us, so. That's the stage we're at now, is that they gave us the draft maps back in April, and we, just as of October 2nd, entered into an appeal period. This is a 90-day period where anybody that has a technical appeal, folks can appeal it by saying, "Gosh, we don't want it," but they can appeal it if there's errors or other problems with the mapping that we will collect and bring to FEMA's attention, if there are any. During this 90-day appeal period is when normally we do a public outreach. The Gavapai County is very well-versed in this, they do a lot of these kind of map revisions all over the county. This will be our first one in ever. So, the public outreach is, we've got two meetings scheduled, both in November, one on the 5th, one on the 18th. They're going to be an open-house style. Oh, and Councilman Blair, to your question, we are sending out a mailing to all of those properties that are affected. FEMA publishes in the newspaper the fact that there is a map change, but it's the kind of thing that's buried in the classifieds, and most folks wouldn't even think to look at it, and even if they did, they might not give it a second thought. So we did want to do a direct mailing to anybody that is going to be affected, both going in and coming out, so that they'll have an opportunity to come to the meetings and get their questions answered. The November 5th meeting is going to be at the Gardens HOA has a facility, and they're the folks that are actually behind the levy, they have, the HOA owns the property that the levy is on, so their residents have a very specific interest in finding out about the new map changes. And then the second public meeting we're going to have is going to be at the Simmons Center. They're both going to be 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock, open-house format, where we'll have computers set up, where they can come in, ask questions, we can take a look at the maps for their property, and give them an idea of how they'll be affected. We also have, the next slide here is, for more information, that folks can always certainly come to my office, call us, and we can give them property-specific information. FEMA has a number of websites, and ways of getting information out. They've got a very, pretty well-developed public outreach program, so we can leverage a lot of the technical literature that they provide. Some of these, when you go to FEMA.gov, it's a big website, and it covers earthquakes and hurricanes and everything else, so it's a bit cumbersome. So my favorite website, on this next slide, if I can get it to change. I may have pressed it too many times. Okay. The FloodSmart.gov is dedicated strictly to flooding information, and it's got really good stuff for homeowners, for insurance agents, for local officials, kind of the whole gist of floodplain, mapping, insurance, and everything, so that's a really good website for folks to refer to. And like I say, we do have stuff posted on our website, and we are working in conjunction with the county. Yavapai County Flood Control District is kind of the umbrella. We operate as our own administrator, and we take care of everything here in the city, but because a lot of these floodplains weave in and out of city and county, we cooperate with them and all this, and they've got some wonderful tools and a lot of good experience with these updates as well, so they're going to attend, their flood control staff is going to attend our public meetings as well. So that's the update, and my last slide is, if you have any questions.
Got questions?
Mark, thanks for the presentation. Just going back to the 90-day appeal process, if somebody wants to get educated about the technical side, what they can actually appeal on, how would they go about doing that?
Well, the, two ways. One, you could look at the FEMA website and download information about technical appeals. Sometimes can be hard to find that kind of thing. The next best thing is to call my office, and we can talk about it, because I have those resources generally at my fingertips, and, but yeah, in the sense that it is a technical appeal, it is based on just finding errors or problems with the mapping, and not necessarily objections to it, per se.
And you mentioned the work with our consultants, so you've had a chance with them to go through these revisions, and from the city's perspective, take a look at what's being proposed, and make sure it's in line with what we know reality to be?
The, I've been with the city, December will be two years, so most of that stuff happened before I got here, so I personally didn't have a chance to do that, but I am also utilizing this 90-day appeal period to look at it myself, and if I see anything that I have questions about, then I can bring it to FEMA's attention as well during this period.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No action to be taken, thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
Okay. Go to item H.
Item H, update of the alternative water portfolio.
Greg, are you there?
Good afternoon, Les.
Yeah, good afternoon. I wanted to see if we were still in afternoon. So, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Let me get myself situated with slides, where we're starting today. So before I start this presentation, I hope you'll allow me just a moment to share with you a comment that was made to me regarding city water. A person calling was seeking water supplies for their project, and said to me that they heard that water was fuzzy. With this comment and additional conversation with the caller, I understood they were having difficulties discerning where the lines and limits of the portfolio were drawn. I mention this today because water and the allocation of it has pathways, yet if you don't know the state law requirements, history, city codes, city water management policy, and other legal documents the city has assumed over time, it could seem fuzzy. Water discussions always start with me asking for the property to be identified, then it can be determined which area of the portfolio may apply. Then it is checked against state laws, city codes, city assumed legal documents. The point here is that as this presentation is given, if you have questions along the way, and if the mayor approves of this, is worth asking, or we're taking the time to ask them, ensuring we stay together and understand where in the portfolio we are speaking, and what conditions surround that type of water supply. So with that, I'd like to get started. There are 11 topics for our presentation today, and they're listed on the screen. Moving ahead, what is alternative water? It's the supplies from sources alternative to pumping additional groundwater from the Prescott Active Management Area, and they include for the city, surface water, reclaimed water, and imported groundwater. I put a little historical note on the bottom, and I apologize to those in the back, it might be very difficult to read, but it's important to remember why we speak of these alternative waters, and what it really means. The Prescott Active Management Area is unique among the three state Safe Yield AMAs. During the early 1990s, when the Department of Water Resources was developing the Assured Water Supply Rules, there was insufficient hydrologic data to make a definitive determination as to whether the AMA was at safe yield or mining groundwater. Due to this uncertainty, Assured Water Supply Rules that were adopted in 1995 were not invoked until more data was collected. In August 1998, the director made a preliminary determination that the Prescott AMA was not in safe yield. The final determination was made on January 12, 1999, and that pretty much sealed the statements in law that the AMA is no longer in safe yield. Additional residential development, other than that already recognized and being served by current and committed groundwater, or otherwise associated with a recognized pre-1998 plat, would require alternative water supplies. So the purpose of today's presentation is to update the availability of alternative water for new development and identify associated challenges, and provide a current status of the calendar year 2015 alternative water budget, which is 100 acre feet, and the active requests for that, for new allocations. And last, outline possible policy actions for council consideration, and I'd like to underscore there, possible, not set in stone. So here is the city's base diagram for the portfolio, and we've used this in the past, but I wanted to start with the upper blocks. The portfolio consists of groundwater, this block here, and that is water that is pumped within the Prescott AMA. The use of this supply within the Active Management Area is for new, oh, excuse me. The use of the supply within the Prescott AMA for new subdivisions, as stated, was halted in 1998, when the area was declared to be out of safe yield, as we discussed in Slide 3. There are also two categories of alternative supplies, so the surface water and reclaimed supplies, and the imported supplies from the Big Chino. Today's presentation has elements of all three, and as we get into the items, I will remind you where we are within this diagram, as different state laws and state administrative codes are associated with each. So we're going to move to the recap from the beginning of the year. The last presentation to council was on June, excuse me, January 6th, with the purpose of identifying the status of the city's portfolio as it was understood at that time, and to identify a block of water to be made available for use in calendar year 2015. This water, like years past, was intended to meet water requests as outlined in the city's water management policy, which states, effective December 31, 1998, all residential development within the city's water service area, desiring to utilize the city's water system, and not having a 100-year Assured Water Supply Certification, must obtain an alternative water allocation through an agreement. So, further, after considering these conditions, council approved a calendar year 2015 alternative water budget for 100 acre feet versus the 200 in prior years. The balance of available alternative water at that time was 314 acre feet, to be reduced by allocations made in 2015. The possible resulting balance of the 214 acre feet, the entirety of the alternative water quantity that remain, which is not in a reservation, after which no further water would be available for development. And I want to pause there for a second, because that is unless conditions change related to the imported supplies and the reclaimed supplies. Later in the presentation, there will be additional information and policy aspects related to this. This slide takes us back to the portfolio diagram and the three blocks seen in Slide 5, and now we see that one of the alternative supplies in more detail, and that's this one right here. Now we're building our portfolio out a little bit more. The diagram is the base for the information provided on January 6, 2015, with some minor updates to that information. Starting with the groundwater block here, these supplies are solely used for subdivisions that were recognized as current and committed demand in 1998, meaning available for existing residential subdivisions that have lots which remain unbuilt, further, that are preliminary plats, the pre-1998 plats, which once they have final platted and meet certain state requirements, the city will receive approval for groundwater increase for these new customers. There will be limited, yet, well, there will be limits, yet it's important additional discussion on this block later in the presentation, so, we've just finished up this one. Next, the alternative water, surface water reclaimed, right in here, and this will be discussed more in the following slides, and last, we have the alternative water, which is the Big Chino. This is where we'll start looking at the alternative water and the overall, well, we're going, excuse me, we're going to look at the alternative water basically block by block at this point. So as previously stated, Big Chino water supplies are not connected to the city's water distribution system. Next, the alternative water here for direct delivery. This is not available, it's in contract at this time. We'll look at the surface water, excuse me, back up. We'll look at the treated effluent for storage recovery, as well as the surface water for storage and recovery. And this is limited, most of it's already in contract or in reservation. Okay. Let's take a little more time here, on these two blocks. These are the two areas of the portfolio that have been relied upon since 1999. There are limited supplies available, the majority is in contracts or in reservations. The reservations include Chino Valley Irrigation District, unplatted vacant residentially-zoned properties in city limits, historical agreements, and Deepwell 1 and 2 increments. Surface water recharge has not, on average, met the DNO projections of 1,391 acre feet. Next, we're going to look a little closer at this block. This is the treated effluent for storage and recovery. In January 2015, further verification of the portfolio had been completed to understand that return flows to the wastewater treatment plants were not meeting DNO projections. When the average of the wastewater treatment plant return flows delivered to the recharge facility were calculated, the result was 592 acre feet. This volume of 592 acre feet required the subtraction of a previously-made contractual reservation of 500 acre feet. So the end result is 92, and this is what you see on the presentation. This means of this number down here that I've lined out, the 1,471.98, physically, what we're seeing at the plants after we take off reservations is 92 acre feet, and this is what you saw in January, too. And last, we're going to move to this block, this is the long-term storage account. This account holds treated effluent supplies that were not used directly in a calendar year, and that can accrue in a state-regulated account for future use. A portion of this supply is recognized to first meet contractual obligations to the Chino Valley Irrigation District. So where we're at on this piece of the portfolio is it's under review, and we are currently in discussions with the Department of Water Resources. This next, or this slide and the next one.
So Les, let me interrupt for a moment. The message of that is that the alternative water supply is tight?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we interrupt with questions?
Sorry, I was.
You may have gone over this in January, but why is it that the effluent is so much less than what was estimated? Why are we down to 92 acre feet?
There's two conditions, and I'll be addressing those a little bit more as we, I think maybe if I move to the next slide, I have you. Does that sound good? Yep. And then we'll see if there's more. So this slide and the next one, as I know, that was a whirlwind trip through the portfolio, so thanks for holding on. So this slide and the next summarizes the alternative water challenges that we just worked through in the previous diagrams, and so the causes for the challenges, which is what Councilwoman Wilcox is asking for. The Big Chino water is not yet being transferred for use. The projections for the 2009 DNO envision the Big Chino project to be online in 2009. Without the city's portion being, without the city's portion being available for use, the reclaimed supply corresponding to growth using Big Chino water has not materialized. So if we weren't bringing in the water supply and having it returned to the wastewater treatment plant, the projections for storage and recovery aren't going to be met. Further, the city has extensive areas where potable supplies are in use without return flows to the wastewater treatment plants. So the numbers look roughly 23,000 water accounts, and about 19,000 wastewater accounts as of January.
Well, this would also include water leaks, like the one that was on Willow Creek Road. I think we lost a million-something gallons there, and then I think there's another water leak up in the tank in Acker Park. They're probably all over the place, but those are potable water that's not getting back into the system.
But this is septic tanks, is what you're talking about, probably, right?
Return flows from homes and businesses to the sewer system and back. So I think, to your point, Councilwoman Wilcox, is that there are leaks, all systems do have leaks. The city has maintained an under 10% water loss, so I think some of the ones that get attention that are sizable, overall, the public works. attention that are sizable, overall, the Public Works Department works very hard to keep the system as tight as possible, and the city, for many years now, has never exceeded that 10% loss rate. So, and also to the Councilwoman Kukanyo's point, we're looking at what we send out for use and what comes back to the wastewater treatment plant. Okay, and the last piece to this is that--
Give me add just a little bit, Leslie, with regards to consumption reduction based on rate increases and vacancies?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, the last point to help with why we're having these challenges, or water's looking tight within the alternative portion of the portfolio, is we have surface water supplies were not increased in the 2009 DNO, they stayed the same. Recharge from this source is subject to seasonal availability and the city's operation of the reservoirs. On average, less than the projected 1,391 acre-feet per year has been recharged annually. Okay, now, we're jumping ahead and switching, so with the previous information that we've seen at this point, we're switching to a specific issue that is part of the alternative portion of the portfolio and is connected to the city's water management policy as amended. This past year, 100 acre-feet were made available for the alternative portfolio. The 100 acre-feet, in accordance with the city's policy, intends 80 acre-feet for market development and 20 acre-feet for workforce. This table provides a list of the Water Service Agreement applications that have been filed, which have not yet been placed into contract, either administratively or by council approval. At this time, the alternative supplies being sought that do not have a reservation associated with them solely based on Water Service Agreement applications in this table is greater than This is the follow-up table. This next slide is Water Resource Management's Tracking of the Pre-Application Conference Projects That Are Also Seeking Alternative Water Supplies. Similar to the previous slide, this slide was updated yesterday, and the additive volume to the previous table could be greater than 150 acre-feet. So, just briefly, you'll see we have two that are to be determined because we don't have demand analysis that's been approved or received at this -- in this case. So, one is received and one is being looked at for approval. Okay, with this slide, we're making another switch, so we're switching out of the 100 acre-feet discussion to a broader item to keep this presentation and the portfolio in perspective. This information is taken directly out of the city's recently ratified general plan. This slide shows the city's portfolio, physically available supplies, as we have been discussing, but in terms of housing units. So, in our -- the city's 2009 decision order, we've talked about the 92 acre-feet, that corresponds to about 263 housing units. The current alternative water balance, and this was -- is not terribly dated, but is a little bit dated, 222 acre-feet, we're looking more like 214, and the corresponding housing units, 634. The next block is the groundwater piece of the portfolio, final plat and preliminary plats and their associated housing units. And last, this reservation pulls us back into the alternative portion of the--
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think it's important to point out that any deviation on the preliminary plats, request for alterations, et cetera, trigger a different demand for water. That's based on the preliminary plats prior to 98, and if somebody comes in and wants some sort of a change to the plat, all of a sudden, the water that was reserved in the Assured Water Portfolio now gets put into alternative water demand if a plat is changed.
Yes, sir. There are two components there. One, on the pre-1998 plats, they have to meet -- this is where I talked about at the very beginning, their state laws and administrative codes and all sorts of things that go to different chunks of land and their water supply that we have to track. The 1998 preliminary plats must have substantial conformance, it's within city resolution, and it's in within the decision order. So, if there's -- if it deviates too far out, it won't meet substantial conformance, and the city will not be able to acquire the water supplies from the state. The other piece that you had mentioned is if we have a property that was on the committed and current groundwater, and it requires replat, then we lose that chunk of water, and we have to try to fulfill it with alternative supplies.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's important anytime we talk about water now, that people get a broader picture than just, we're short of water. The water that we have some of, which is in your Assured, but everything has to be built to what was preliminarily-platted in the Assured Water Portfolio, which was approved by ADWR back in 98 or whatever it was. But we can't use that water if people ask for something different than what they said they needed to water for back in 98.
Right. We do -- water has pathways and legal documents, and we have to follow those through. So, here's where we are in that upper block, so the reservation for residentially-zoned and water tracks. This is back on the alternative side, the green block that we've looked at in the past, and the associated housing units. So, this upper block, this is without Big Chino water, there is approximately 9,700 additional units out there. So, we're bringing this forward because the message today is that we have challenges within alternative water, but the overall portfolio, we would be taking home the wrong message if we didn't realize that the groundwater side still has a significant volume of water and a significant number of housing units associated with it. Alternative water has allocation challenges, as I said, and we just, once again, knowing that there are significant volumes that remain for significant additional housing units at this time. This slide summarizes the presentation so far related to alternative supplies and the 100 acre-foot allocation of those supplies for 2015. So, here we go on a fairly quick recap. The supply of the city's renewable resource, the alternative water, has been drawn down to support development since 1999. As of January 1st, 2015, approximately 314 acre-feet remained. When used, the supply of alternative water will have been exhausted, and once again, except for where we have water in reservation. 100 acre-feet of the 314 were budgeted by council for new development for 2015, and recall that 80 acre-feet is for market and 20 acre-feet is for workforce.
Leslie, question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that you can answer, but because I was on the Water Committee when it was first enacted, what was the acre-foot in 1999 that was available?
I do have that in my notes, just to give me a quick moment to flick.
I think it needs to just show that within the 15 years, we have gone from X amount to the amount that you show we have today.
Okay, so, this was in your January packet and presentation. So, the city's overall portfolio, let's just back up because I understand -- let's get to the portfolio diagram. This is truly our map that keeps everybody together. So, where we're at now is 24,574 acre-feet. In 1999, the portfolio was 9,175 acre-feet. Of that, 8,000, just over 8,000, we'll round, 8,000 was groundwater in this category, and over in alternative water, this was solely reclaimed supplies, treated effluent. It didn't have this branching that it has now, and that was 1,085 acre-feet.
Okay, so, basically, we've been since 1999 when we were deemed in groundwater mining, we've gone from 1,085 to down to where we are today, to 314. Is that a fair statement?
The -- I think we'd have to add more to this. The city did then go for a 2005 modification to their decision order, and I have those numbers. It bumped this block overall up to 14,822. Recall that the Watson and Willow Lake reservoirs were purchased in the 1998-99 time period because of challenges related to safe yield, and it was in 2005 that the city brought that into their portfolio for use. And so, that's when we first see that, 1,341. So, I'm sorry, sir, if I'm not quite answering your question, but the overall -- there was an overall block based on the 1999 decision order elements, it was added to in 2005, and then it was added to again in 2009.
Okay.
Sorry, we have to jump through all this. Okay, so, basically, our next slide was going to go back to this -- these two tables here and the 100 acre-foot allocation for 2015. So, we walked through, I believe, the top three bullet points. So, the tables that you saw related to the 100 acre-feet, where we're watching what we have with alternative water supply applications and what we're watching coming into PAC at this time. There are seven applications for 2.6 acre-feet that have been received, and according to current policy, may be eligible for administrative approval. The remaining 15 are applications that are presently in hand totaling over 300 acre-feet, which would require council approval. Now, with the additional information at this point in the presentation, there are some policy aspects to begin listing. First, the reservation for alternative water that was made in 2006, it was alternative supplies that were put aside. They were adjusted downward in 2009 to reflect developability, which high-terrain slopes in the area suspected that developing on those slopes would be challenging. This is the vacant residentially-zoned tracks within city limits. Note that this reservation was a policy action and did not vest any such rights with a property -- as a property right. So, is this the highest and best use of this block of water, or should the reservation be shifted to Big Chino water for longer-term future availability? What should be the priorities for allocating the limited alternative water remaining to various types of development, such as the list below, multifamily, single-family, residential lot splits? How much water is available for non-residential use, meaning commercial and industrial? What development performance criteria should be applied to new water service agreements? Should all new development be required to connect to city sewer in the absence of a contractual agreement that otherwise entitles the property to water service? What criteria should be applied to extending current water service agreements with expiration dates? What should be the process for accepting Assured Water Supply certificates brought to the city? And these are the irrigation grandfathered rights, that's the acronym there. Those can be -- there's a list, it's probably not a very long list at this point, but those can be extinguished and pledged, and ultimately, basically, a certificate that can be provided to a -- well, either a designated or a non-designated provider, so it could be Prescott Valley or the city. Should the availability and pricing of water presently available at the city's Easy Street Water Station be changed? What changes should be made to accepting and approving applications for alternative water?
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, sir.
Let's go back to the Easy Street--
Yes.
-- Water Station. Let's discuss it just a little bit and clarify for fellow counsel while I think it's important to have this here. I mean, gosh, I understand what we're charging the residents and the ratepayers of Prescott for water. What do we sell in the same water that, by law, we're required to produce, free of arsenic and other types of contaminants, et cetera? And yet, you can pull up to our water station from anywhere on the planet with your bumper truck and fill it up and tote our water off for not very much money. So, you want to go over that just a little bit, and maybe you can say it a little better, maybe a little more eloquently than I just did.
Like, what's the difference between 100 gallons in the city and 100 gallons at Easy Street?
Well, I -- sorry, I think you covered it well. I think that, overall, the city has to be in step with current state laws and otherwise. They're a little out of sync, I think. So, this is one of the elements, whereas you're noting, there's high accessibility to it, the cost that takes the city to make sure it's of a quality that can be used for potable supplies is part of the pricing, and fortunately, the city does have recent water and sewer models that helped prepare for the impact fee adjustment that came through in August of 2014, and I think that will help with the city determining what is the appropriate pricing, and potentially, it will take more discussion on the use of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Now, some possible actions to consider with the 20 -- the calendar year 2015 budget of 100 acre-feet and the basic city water allocation policies. So, we've walked through all this as to where we are in the portfolio, what action was made in 2015 for a quantity of 100 acre-feet. We see the challenges that staff and those inquiring for water are having. So, we're looking at possible, once again, possible actions for consideration, and they're listed here. Temporarily suspend accepting new applications for alternative water. Prioritize allocations of remaining water by type of development as listed below, multifamily, commercial, lot splits, no new subdivisions. Apply the priorities to the current active applications and projects that have been presented to PAC. This is the pre-application conference. Require all new development to connect to city sewer, whether served by groundwater or alternative water, if not otherwise contractually entitled to water service. Shift the reservation made for residentially-zoned and watered tracks within the city limits to the -- to future Big Chino source, to that supply, along with the current unreserved alternative water with 314 acre-feet. Make it available for current active applications and projects that have been or will be presented at the PAC, which is, once again, the pre-application conference. Evaluate the availability of alternative water already allocated to residential development. This is, in parentheses, the 10th of an acre-foot markup. So, if you recall, what the city's policy has been for single-family, it's .35; for multifamily, it's .25. Of that, a 10th of an acre-foot is identified for commercial-industrial, and we've generally termed that "support services." So, to finish that thought on Item 6, identify that and manage this quality -- quantity to support such development. Prohibit the connection to city water without well abandonment. Prohibit well drilling on properties served or to be served with city water. City code changes where required to implement the foregoing actions, and then resume accepting applications for the allocation of alternative water to new development within the new guidelines
I would like to, again, make a comment. This is not a question, but under Connell's leadership and recommendations on certain things in a long-term, short-term water policy, had we not, back in 2005, 2006, that era, chose to place some water in reservation for unwatered lots, that water, too, would have been gone by today. So, again, compliments to your manager for having the foresight to save some of the water for a different day, and that day may be here today, and we have the flexibility to shift on the portfolio with the anticipation of the Big Chino project coming online sooner than later, I hope.
Leslie, what's the rational basis for the .35 acre-feet number and the .25 acre-feet number?
Well, I -- I'll be honest, I don't have a -- I haven't found that in the city's playbook, what exactly -- why that decision was exactly made. I think it was a prudent decision. It was originally .36 when the city first became a designated-- It was originally .36 when the city first became a designated water provider. I think there was more activity that went on that looked at and said, now, wait a minute, you know, we're probably looking more at .35 for a single-family and .25 for multifamily, considering how, you know, a property that's, you know, a duplex would, might be different than a single-family dwelling. And then I think there was foresight, and it was probably prudent to look at, okay, what are the other needs of somebody who lives here? Some support services, some commercial and some industrial. So I can't say that's actually, that I've found exactly how this happened, but it's been accepted by the Department of Water Resources, and it's what the city has been using for some time.
Yeah. And that does have some correlation to the good old days when water rates were low and people were using a lot of water, putting a lot of water on the lawn, water was running down the street. And so if you look at, you know, a quarter of an acre foot, you're at, what, 80,000 gallons or something like that, and people are using 80,000 gallons a year for water.
Well, what if we evolve toward code changes that require new developments to be super-water Rainwater harvesting for any outdoor landscaping? A complete ban on using city water for landscaping anywhere in the city, old or new? Could those numbers change?
I think that there's always improvement that can be made. I think it's also important to recognize how much the community has done regarding conservation requirements. I think it gets lost in the shuffle a little bit. So I think that's the best way I can answer it, ma'am, is to say that there's always room for improvements, and I think we can look at those. None of these items today are absolutes, they are possibles actions. And it's also important to recognize through the tiered rate, through the, what I term, and I think others would agree, who are water resource managers, heavy regulation through the Department of Water Resources. We have a fourth management plan that's adopted and will go into effect in 2017, which will tighten down a little bit more how water conservation will happen. The opportunities, as you mentioned, are there.
Well, I think we really need to consider giving new developments some credit. If they're willing to be constructed in a water-efficient, less consumptive manner, they should be allowed to develop more because they're using less water per unit.
Well, I think, you know, that's, that's a subject for a lot of discussion because what happens is, no matter how efficient that particular development is, we can't control the behavior of the person living there. And that's the concern, that, you know, as we go into the future, I think you're absolutely right, in the longer-term future, that we're going to see much more water-efficient development. And if we can determine how to put appropriate safeguards in place, then we can talk about doing more development with the same amount of water. But we're quite a ways off from that. In terms of some of the other techniques, such as rainwater harvesting and so forth, over the short term, that's not really going to affect us on the water resource availability because that will eventually require the state to recognize some kind of methodology for converting that yield of rainwater harvesting into some kind of assured water supply, making that transformation. And that's where it kind of stalled when it got into the legislature, which is not to say that it won't happen, it's just that there are a lot of very different aspects of this that all have to be taken into account, including what we learned before, the wastewater treatment plant, the airport, that stopped working, basically, because, you know, the strength of the wastewater was too much. Now, we've, we've dealt with that, but if we're going to increase the strength of that water by another 50%, for example, then we're going to have process retrofits and so forth. So there are really a lot of, a lot of aspects to what you're talking about. Sure, you've got to get started. Sure, you got to put it in place, piece by piece and so forth, but my sense is going to take quite a while.
So, Leslie, my follow-up question, I know we've got two slides left, but in the first 23 slides, if the city was to do nothing, not change any policies, just continue down the path we're on, the 314 acre feet of alternative water supply that's available would be eaten up by the current applications that are pending in front of us now? It's actually about 80% of the pending applications.
That would be subject to a council change. So right now, the council has 100 acre feet available, where the budgeted amount for 2015 is 100 acre feet. So once that's put into contract, then it would be the next calendar year, you know, towards the end of this year, early next calendar year, that the council made another decision.
Okay.
So at this point, we're offering up or stating as a possible action that if you open up that remaining 314, what that might look like. But right now, how policy is with the resolution that was passed last year or early this year, it's 100 acre feet.
So even with the 100 acre feet, let's just look out over three years. If we don't accept any new applications and 80% of the projects that have come forward go forward, the alternative water portfolio will be depleted for new projects?
For new projects for which there is no reservation in the portfolio.
Correct. And so, you know, the 23 slides have a lot of information.
Yes.
So I'm trying to get it down to a very simplistic level, which with water is nearly impossible. So you've got projects that have the reservation, they have a water service agreement or commitment from the city of Prescott to serve them, there's something in place. You've got lots that are scattered all over the city that are not built on, that we have a current reservation for, many of which may never be built on. We've made an adjustment in the past based upon topography, access, things of that nature. We've got a list of people who are asking for water, and we have a situation where we're trying to identify how much water we really have available through all of these different boxes and changes that are going to be coming to these boxes. But without the Big Chino pipeline, at this point in time, we have enough requests in place to eat up the balance of the supply.
If nothing else changes.
If nothing else changes. Okay. So that gets me to the next question, which I think gets us into the next two slides, which is, what are the solutions to that problem or that issue? I think on a global scale, we still have water commitments out there that we may not be aware of, and we have projects that have water allocations that are not performing. We have projects with water allocations that are performing somewhat, but are also going to be asking for an extension. How do we get to the end game of moving the city forward and not running into a, we're done, it's over, unless you go build on one of these old lots that may or may not be buildable?
Okay.
Well, thank you, Charlie. And, you know, just to say one quick thing, I would agree, and over the past years that I've sat on the water issues committee, we've had projects that have come in and wanted a reservation for water, seemingly because they had a project that was ready to go. And here we are on some of them, 10 years down the road, and they're asking for an extension, you know? At what point in time do we have a policy that says, if you don't perform, you lose your water? What you've done is you've made their property worth more money by giving them water, but do we have a strict guidelines or rule that says if you don't perform by X amount a period of time? Or, as I talked about numerous times before, is allocating water in chunks. Instead of giving them the whole amount for the whole project, make sure they're performing before you give them more. Because what we're doing is we're tying the hands of other people that may have a very wild, worthwhile project to do in the city of Prescott. But we don't, we have the water, but it's tied up, and it may be tied up for some very poor reasons. So from my standpoint, I think all those things need to be evaluated, and we need to look at how we disperse the water availability and make sure the projects are really real.
Yes, sir. So I think Councilman Arnold and Councilman Blair, we've run through some policy aspects. One, to your point, Councilman Blair, about what are the development performances, and I know that's been asked by others. Councilman Arnold, I believe, we did run through some of the things that we need to be looking at with this block, this 100 acre foot block for this calendar year, but it also will expand into what is the remaining volumes to use. And once again, tracking the history, I think the cities and most, I think, water providers find themselves in this position where they, they have a decision order, everything looks pretty good, you get towards the end, you get another decision order because you acquired more supplies. Get to the end of it, more, the tougher decisions are now there. To Councilman Blair's point, there have been, I think the count is, it's over 300, I wish I had the exact number with me, of water contracts for alternative water supplies. And you've seen, or I've seen by reading through those, that there have been different approaches taken at different times. When the water became tight, they phased it out, you know, or phased it in, I guess I should say. They said, okay, 20 acre feet here, and then if, you know, maybe 20 acre feet the next year, those kind of things. So it's just time to, once again, reevaluate exactly where things are at, knowing what our future, you know, what the futures look like. I don't think, at the time when the 2009 decision order was being contemplated, that was about 2007, the picture didn't look quite like what we know it to be now. So we just have to, I guess, I, sorry, I think I'm talking too much. I think we're just going to have to take this for what we know and make those tough decisions as to how to move through what remains, and being fully aware, we have a groundwater block that's strong, and we have potentials that if we look at things a little bit more in the overall decision order, that might free things up. There might be cases through council policy actions or water management policy actions that help with this situation.
I appreciate that, because I think as we lose council folks and new council people come on, as well as the mayor, I think it's important not only to look at this side of it, but also look at the aspect of the Big Chino water. More than ever before, if we're going to do anything in the future, we need to look at private-public partnership and start moving the ball down the road on this thing in the near future, too, not just to let it sit there. I mean, it's very evident that we have parcels out there, as we saw today, just with Willow Creek Road Alignment, that's raw land out there, what can be developed in the county with individual wells, because there's really no such policy that governors, Arizona State Water Resources, of whether somebody can drill a private well or not. So I have a real problem with, with water volumes being diminished and not returned, but yet we're hamstrung and handcuffed when we're doing the right thing, but yet, when it's in the county or on individual wells, they're not required to have the same level of scrutiny as we are. So the sooner that we can do the Chino Valley thing and bring everybody on board to a potable situation with a reclaiming of sewer, I think it's better for everybody all around. But that's another story.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, again, Councilman, keep in mind that the Big Chino water supply is not the panacea, all the problems in that 46% of the water is already obligated at Prescott Valley, and out of the 54%, a big or a significant portion of that is contractually obligated to the Deepwell Ranch. So I'm just sharing that with you, that the issue for changing water policy is an issue right up front because it is evident until there's other things that come into play with supply opportunities, the community is significantly limited in the immediate future, in long-range future, until something changes, of which I don't think any of us sitting here have a crystal ball. One of the options that's always out there, of course, is for folks to bring water with them by certain things they can turn over to the water portfolio that is hard, I don't know, what, how can you say hard water, but something more significant than just paper water. But it's, there are the things that can be done, we just don't know what they are yet, and that's what Leslie was referencing. There are some policy decisions that are going to have to be made here in the near future, sooner than later.
Are we good to move forward?
Yep.
Okay. So we're on slide 24, and this returns us back to the overall portfolio and the full decision order diagram that we have seen several times. It started on your slide eight. There are a list of items for the city to be considering before the current decision order document requires modification. So as it states in the decision order now, if the city doesn't have the approval of construction by a certain date in 2019, the decision order would have to be modified. And so preparing for that, the items to research and address in this next decision order modification, the first one would be to assess the increased use of surface water supplies for recharge and recovery to determine if the current 1,391 acre feet can be increased. That's, once again, an extended conversation within the severance transfer. It does allow for more use of that supply. Excess, or, excuse me, assess long-term storage account. This is the account, the block that I showed you had yellow on it. This is where the supplies that are recharged and not used within the same year are banked. And within that, the city had transferred about 624 acre feet to a certain development, and that development has gone extremely quiet. So that would be worth investigating some more. Determine whether some of the subdivisions or other allocations covered by historical agreements can be shifted to current and committed groundwater demand. So the background on that is that in cases, we have older subdivisions that were in existence prior to the 1980 Groundwater Management Code and had agreements with the city for water. It appears that some of those should have been captured as part of the current and committed groundwater demand. And this is just the nature of things, I think. You know, when you run in for a decision order, when you're declared out of safe yield, everybody's moving quickly, you roll right into a decision order that was new for the city. It wasn't something that staff had experienced with, I don't think. There, you have the potential to miss things. So, but we don't have much that I would say in that category that we're missing in terms of subdivisions. Then last, assess the reclaimed supplies within the direct delivery portion of the portfolio. So that was that first block, sub-block of Lower Green. And so those are the contracts that the city has for the large turf facilities and industrial facilities. The contracts are out for 2,240 acre feet. Within the decision order, it's about 1,700, 1,800. That might be something to look at a little bit more. So this takes us to basically the last slide of next steps. So November 10, 2015, or in a subsequent meeting, consideration or adoption of a council resolution amending the water management policy to implement selected immediate actions. And I believe the intent right there is for that 100 acre foot block of water. Next, continuing action in future council meetings. Identify a block of alternative water to be made available for commercial-industrial development from that 10th of an acre foot markup. Draft city code changes required to implement other selected actions. Research and address items necessary for the next decision order modification. And last, continue comprehensive agreement, number one, work on monitoring and modeling that's necessary to demonstrate the effects, if any, on the withdrawal of Big Chino groundwater on the Upper Verde River. So we've touched on that last piece here and there, but as you recall, the city has an agreement in principle related to the Big Chino. Further, a comprehensive agreement, one is an offshoot of that, or it was contemplated within the agreement, and the city's basically in year two of that eight-year agreement. So with that, if I can answer any more questions, I'd be happy to.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And Leslie, to your November 10 item here, I think it would be important to see a proposed modification to the water management plan. I think we need to see that as quickly as possible so that we can set forth that policy. I know, just looking here, you've got a line of people that are wondering what their next steps are, so we need to clarify our policy. I'm concerned that we're going to get into a picking winners and losers situation, but we're getting to the bottom of a resource, and I do agree that we need to prioritize how we are using this water and not just giving it away. Be curious to know more about North Nugget and what that is, I've never heard of that before. But I do think there are some immediate things that we need to undertake, and I would certainly like to see something at the November voting meeting to implement. like to see something at the November voting meeting to implement those changes.
Anyone else at this moment? Craig has, or Leslie, both of you. These recommendations, do you expect they would come directly to council, or should they go through and have a discussion with the, our water committee? We've depended on this committee to be our eyes and ears and brains for the rest of the council, for this, this last year at least. Is that something that should be scheduled and discussed and a recommendation brought forward to the entire council? And certainly, there'd need to be a management recommendation as well as a water committee recommendation, in my opinion.
Well, that's up to the council. Obviously, the decision is, any decision is going to be, have to made by the entire council. I think there is a time element here. And the time element here, in my view, is that we have this line of projects which need to be, you know, we need some criteria for prioritizing those. But even more fundamentally than that, we have the issue of reservations and so forth, which provides some flexibility here. So, it's really up to the mayor and council whether you'd like the Water Issues Committee to talk about a few of these things first, or some of these things first, and then bring a recommendation, or whether we just fast-track it and bring the recommendation to the council, whatever the council's most comfortable with.
I'm like Charlie. You know, there's some stuff that, as Jim and I have put it many times, some of these historical things that seem to grow wings out of the dirt, that have water allotments tied to them. I'd like to a little bit know, a little bit more about the history and why they were given that kind of allotment, and performance on giving people the allotment. I'm still struggling with the fact that, back in the day, when we were offering up water like it was nothing out there, and it's tied up, and it's tying the hands of our developers and contractors that are now coming for it today, to exercise some kind of project that is worthwhile or different in the community, and we're finding ourselves hamstrung because we have given this water out and have no control over it now. We need to have a policy that has to look at some of these things that have mold growing on them and figure out how we can better use it for the community.
Jane.
Well, I suggest you all read The Water Knife, if you'd like to see a futuristic, very frightening look at what could happen in Arizona when we start really running out of water. It's a page-turner. It's a fiction novel, but there's some elements of truth in it. And when you said the word "future," Mr. McConnell, it just triggered that thought in my mind, that we need to be thinking far ahead about using as little water as possible, recycling as much as we can, and really getting our numbers based on reality. Some of these, maybe this .35 acre-feet isn't the right number anymore. I'm wondering, are you really ready to come back to the council with amendments to the water management policy that reflect today's reality?
Well, certainly not as, something as fundamental as that in the short term. The downside, or let's say the Achilles' heel, is that the more efficient you, as we talked about, as you become more efficient, if you just grow more and use the same amount of water, if it's a precious resource, then there's a fundamental question there of what you've accomplished. And so, I think that that's what we're grappling, or will be grappling with in the longer-term future. I'm confident that in the short term, with respect to what's been laid out here today, that is, the projects that we have lined up, that is, the amount we have and the flexibility we have in the reservation for underwater parcels, I'm confident that we can stay in business here, but we need to have a conscious prioritization here. And as has been pointed out, we also need to make it very clear that there have to be performance criteria. And those are fairly simple, actually. Sometimes they're on a case-by-case basis because developments are different. You know, there's a lot of difference between 300 units and 10 units. But I'm confidence, confident in fairly short order, you know, we can, we can deal with what we're dealing with here, or need to deal with here, and come back to you with some, with some policy recommendations which do not result in, you know, undue delays while we talk about things. I think that, I think that we can expedite more than that.
And Mayor, I think to your question, you know, if we're focused on the policy question, I think certainly the Water Issues Committee would be happy to meet in short order if necessary. We would make that available if that's the desire, the direction we want to go. Otherwise, we can do it also as a whole council.
The, this, this group of, we won't call them problems, we'll call them opportunities, that has come to the surface, certainly has happened on our watch. But the amount of water available on our watch will not satisfy all of the requests that are before us. So, we will be looking at a policy that will probably extend into next year, because there'll be another 100 acre-feet available next year if we continue the existing policy. So, yet, the, our recommendation or our policy is going to also affect the new council. And so, I want to make sure that we do it the very best we can. And the allocations, if we, if we make these allocations on our watch, that they're the, it's the right thing to do and the right ones, so that it doesn't move something forward that that council had very little or nothing to do with. So, what's your thinking?
I agree with Charlie. I think that between Charlie, Blair, and I, we can meet and come back to the council as a whole at the earliest opportunity and give you a recommendation after vetting what Mr. McConnell and his most competent staff come up with as to how to immediately address what we're dealing with.
We have a, we may have a meeting on November 2 that normally is a workshop. If we need to change the purpose of that, that meeting to include some policies that the council needs to vote on, maybe we should think about that and get started on it right away, if you can have your, your meeting right away.
Certainly, we'll work with staff to do that.
So that we don't wait, wait and dump it all on November 10, if we can clean up at least part of it on November 2. If that gives you the time to, at least we start the process.
November 3 is a, is a council meeting.
Third, yeah.
Yeah, it's November 3. You know, we'll, we'll see what we can come up with in terms of a framework here. Like I said, you know, we're dealing, and it has been pointed out, we're dealing with something, it's a finite resource, and any finite resource that's used becomes exhausted. And, you know, we're, we're not out of water. We can build 9,600 units, or we have the capacity to build 9,600 units. We have reservations, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm confident that we can get our arms around this and, you know, tweak the policy and get where we need to go.
One last question, Mayor, of staff, or actually Leslie or Craig. You know, are we pretty certain or pretty confident that we have our arms around historical agreements that were made in the past at this point? I mean, I know that I've asked this question over the years, and we keep having stuff come to the top that we weren't aware of, or at least different water people weren't aware of, or different city managers weren't made aware of. It's kind of like the historical knowledge hasn't followed a process, and all of a sudden we find ourselves in a quagmire. Are we pretty certain that we have all these, you know, with our arms around?
What, I would, sir?
Best we can.
I would say that prior to my arrival, I understood that a large easement was brought forward. Probably should have been known. And because of that, and the, once again, the water's always has elements that have to be continually looked at, council had requested that a, you know, a complete review be done to look at all easements that the city had. So, my understanding was the files that I were, was given, everything had been looked through. So, the files exist. I still refer to them back today when just a very small chunk of land comes in and says, we think we have, we should have water, and I'm wondering why. And they say, well, we have a water line, you know, a branch line, basically, off of Main, that we agreed to. So, we work with those. I can't guarantee that there's not going to be anything else, because when I came, once again, when I came in, I understood that work had been done. So, we're going to do the, you know, the best we can with that, that topic. And then I think overall, too, I think the council should understand that there are highs and lows in water. Council, or, excuse me, city manager had mentioned there's finite supplies. So, there's been previous councils who had to look at, as they were coming towards the end of a decision order, you know, the availability on it, what are we going to do next? And know that the city has worked, I think, very hard in being a good designated water provider, going after those options related to recharge, it's been happening for years, looking at the reservoirs and ultimately purchasing those, staying in step and looking at Big Chino and figuring out how that's going to work. As you know, water's not easy. So, I hope you understand that we're not walking away, you know, to reiterate, we're not walking away with a portfolio that's not in good shape. We have a portion of it that you, that all of us need to take a real close look at and see what happens next. And then in the long term, we have to be honest with ourselves and say, well, Big Chino might be roughly the last bucket. And that has been looked at. Once again, the city has done that outward look to see what does build-out look like. And there just might be a certain carrying capacity. So, with that, we'll keep working on all these elements, and I will look at where I can see things might not be in the right category and try to move those things. Look at North Nugget, see what's happening there. Look at what the opportunities might be related to surface water recharge. Look at the opportunities of how we help get areas sewered that should be sewered. So, we're in sync with this whole idea of recharge and recovery, which is really the guiding principle for AMAs that are out, out of safe yield. You have to start cycling your supplies. So, I look forward to coming back on another day.
And with that said, you did a good job. Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Leslie. We adjourn.